My apologies. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, September 16th. I now call this meeting to order. I invite everyone to help speak the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. As I started to say before, we are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways that you can participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to our city clerk. If participating remotely, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. A quick note before we begin, we would like to acknowledge that the City Council has recognized September as Suicide Prevention Month. This year's theme is Love Over Loneliness. We honor the efforts of organizations and individuals dedicated to reducing the stigma, providing support, and saving lives through increased awareness and education. Now we will move on to our first ceremonial item, which is a commendatory resolution in honor of April Adams. This is the City of San Mateo Resolution Number C3 2024, commending April Adams for her years of service to the city. Whereas the City Council of San Mateo, California pauses to honor the life contributions and the cherished memory of April Adams, whose early and unexpected passing leaves an immense void in our community, especially for her three beloved children and family. Whereas April Adams began her journey with the City of San Mateo in 1993, serving with dedication in the Parks and Recs Department Aquatics Section, where her commitment and passion quickly became evident. After a brief hiatus, she returned in 2002, taking on roles at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center and later with the San Mateo Police Activities League, PAL, where she became an indispensable part of the organization for over 20 years. Whereas April excelled in every role she took on, embodying the qualities of trustworthiness, passion, and kindness. As the frontline face of PAL, she was the first point of contact for parents and participants, ensuring programs ran smoothly, supporting membership, managing fund development, and providing critical assistance to staff. April's efforts extended far beyond her job title, as she was not only a steadfast support system for PAL, but also its in-house historian and heartbeat. Whereas April's contributions were felt far beyond the walls of city offices, whether she was creating outreach materials, setting up programs, or processing payroll. April worked tirelessly with a unique blend of capability, creativity, and humor. To know April was to know her wit, her humor, and the contagious energy she brought to the room. Her warmth and playful sarcasm made her unforgettable to those fortunate enough to know her. And whereas beyond her professional life, April was a devoted daughter, wife, and mother. Her heart and spirit enriched the lives of her family and friends. And her presence as a warm and smiling face, whether behind the desk at PAL or serving drinks at Fred's, left an indelible mark on everyone she encountered. Her kindness, humor, and hard work were hallmarks of her character. And whereas April's legacy lives on in the countless lives she touched, the programs she helped sustain, and the friendships she nurtured. She will be deeply missed by her colleagues at PAL, the Police Department, Parks and Recreation, and the entire San Mateo community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of San Mateo formally extends its deepest sympathies to the family of April Adams, especially her children, and expresses profound gratitude for her many years of service, leadership, and friendship. The City of San Mateo will be forever enriched by her life and deeply mourns her loss. Presented in loving memory of our friend and colleague, April Adams, adopted this 16th day of September 2024, every member of the San Mateo City Council. And now I would like to ask Chief of Police Ed Barberini to speak a few words.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity and I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak or say a few words regarding April. I have some notes, but for April, you don't really need notes. She was quite a, quite a person. April truly bought into the mission of PAL. She believed in what we, in what we do at PAL. You mentioned the number of lives that are touched by April. There are hundreds, well, there are thousands of individuals who, who don't even know that they were touched by the hard work that April put in every single day. Without April, there would be a generation, if not two, that did not experience the opportunities that a lot of us take for granted, that we provide to the young people in our communities as well as their families. I mean, she knew that. She recognized the value and the importance of PAL and that's what kept her going. Even more important than that was April as an individual. I had the pleasure of working down the hall from April for over four years. I got to see her every day. And, and when I was having a rough day, April made my day better. When I was having a good day, April made my day better. There was a, there was a friendly banter. There was a, a, a real connection that she made with people. She was warm, she was welcoming, she was real, she was genuine. And she was a huge part of the Park and Rec and PAL families and she's going to be missed. And we're a better organization for having April Adams as being part of it. So I thank you for taking the time to, to recognize her this evening. It means a lot to all of us and to me personally, I'm going to miss her. So I'd like to invite her family down if they could just to take a quick picture with you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, absolutely. So now we will move on to our second ceremonial item, which is the Annual Home Maintenance Awards, presented by the San Mateo United President, Thomas Morgan. Thomas, please come on down and introduce this wonderful event.
So I'm Thomas Morgan, the President of San Mateo United. We're an umbrella neighborhood organization that tries to bring to City Council's attention and to City Staff's attention issues that are raised by a majority of neighborhoods as to not appear to acting on behalf of one neighborhood or another. And this is one of our, it is our key annual event. And it's to recognize the homeowners who go above and beyond in making San Mateo a lovely and wonderful place and people who live in diverse home types as, as we are a diverse community. And with that, we'll go into the winners. The first one is from the Beersford Hillsdale Neighborhood. It's at 900 Laurel Wood and it's Manny and Juanita Casillas. They have a lovely home on, adjacent to Laurel Creek. They were able to buy their house some time ago and recently renovated it and put much attention to the garden and made it just a wonderful place to appreciate as you're walking by and enjoy. And Tom Lees is the President of Beersford Neighborhood. And the next slide. The next is the Central Neighborhood Association. And this week, this year's winner is Tricia Powers. She lives at 510 South Grant Street in a wonderful craftsman-style house. Really, it might not look like it, but she really appreciates the amount of light that gets into the house. It just makes it a wonderful place to live. Next. And this is the Sugarloaf Homeowners Association at 1412 De Anza. William and Virginia Riley. They've owned the house, I believe, since 1980, the original owners. And they've made a number of improvements to the yard. It's deer-friendly and there's irrigate, low-drip irrigation to preserve water and they install the foam roof to really save energy costs and make the home energy efficient. And the next one is the Baywood Neighborhood Association at 371 Franklin Street. Bob and Kathy Libertore, I think. And Bob has started working with his grandfather at the age of 10 to learn how to maintain the yard and he's been maintaining his lovely yard ever since and does all the work by himself and just a real treasure. Thank you. Next. And for Sunny Bray Neighborhood Association, we wanted to honor Nikki Huth, who joins us from Redwood City. She came to San Mateo and since she's moved to the neighborhood, she's made the neighborhood and her house a very wonderful place to admire and appreciate as we walk towards Sunny Bray Park and just enjoy time in the neighborhood. And that's it.
Should we have a photo with all of the winners and their homes? Yes. All right, now we are going to move on to our next ceremonial item and call Chief Barberini down to talk to us about Breast Cancer Awareness Month and all that the police are doing.
Good evening once again, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time. We're kind of keeping you busy tonight, we apologize for that. But we're, we're here in front of you a little early this year. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I mean, the reason we're here a little bit early is because we have a special event coming up scheduled for October 5th called our, the Kickoff to our Pink Patch Project. As many people are aware, police departments throughout the Bay Area and the state dawn pink patches. Some of, we wrap our, a couple cars in pink to recognize and support our, our fight against breast cancer. In our, in our city, in our police department, we've taken that to a new level and we've kind of taken a lead throughout the county and the Bay Area by making it an event and making it truly a movement or an effort to have some tangible results as far as working towards a cure for this disease. The reality is I do very little. This is all run by officers who spend a lot of their own time because they care about this cause that's touched many of us in the department. Tonight, I'd like to introduce the leader of, of this, of this fight, Officer Julio Joelavet, who's going to talk to you a little bit about what we do, what the event is, and what it's all about. So I'd like to introduce Julio.
Hello, everyone.
Good to see you tonight.
Good to see you. Contrary to what this uniform and my cohorts might say, I hate doing this and talking in front of everybody. So forgive the nerves. Thank you for having us. I'll try to keep it as brief as I can, I know time's limited. But like my chief said, this project's near and dear to my heart. So we can jump on in. Basically, like my chief had mentioned, the Pink Patch Project began with the Seal Beach Police Department down in Southern California back in 2013. We have participated with the Pink Patch Project for a few years. But after my mom's diagnosis, I challenged my department to see what we can do different and how we can bring tangible support to those that are around us instead of kind of throwing pennies in the conglomerate, that is, a lot of the nonprofit organizations that exist. So we kind of took the bull by the horns and now host an event that we're going to be talking about. Change the slide. So, so basically, we took a step back and said, well, what can we be doing different to help spread the message within our community? And how we can support people given a diagnosis. Thirty-three percent of women will receive a diagnosis, a di, a cancer diagnosis, excuse me, and one in eight will receive a breast cancer diagnosis. So fairly, a fair number of people in our community are unfortunately susceptible to that. So we challenged and said, well, what can we do to try to get ahead of that? And our slogan now has become "To Detect It, Treat It, and Defeat It." And we try to do that by hosting an event known as the Pink Patch Party. Let's see, I think that's the next slide. Last year was our first year hosting it in downtown. The year prior, we did that in, at the Hillsdale Mall, which was great. We outgrew our space and we, we thought that we'd reinvigorate our downtown, bring some, bring some light to what was COVID, coming back from COVID, I should say. So we hosted our, our 2023 Pink Patch Party. We could switch the slide. Some photos of that. We partnered with every law enforcement agency in our, in our county and Sutter Health to offer our community free mammograms or, sorry, Sutter wants me to say no cost to patient mammograms, which is, is, is very important. We have those, there are people who don't receive mammograms. So we want to make sure that we are getting ahead of that opportunity to really engage our community and give them that, that, that chance to fight against the disease. This year, again, we'll be bringing it to our beautiful downtown. And I have a little commercial that we created for that.
In recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, join the San Mateo Police Officers Association for the Third Annual Pink Patch Party on Saturday, October 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in downtown San Mateo. Get a no-cost to patient mammogram with Sutter Health's state-of-the-art mobile mammography RV. The fun continues with a comedy night and raffle at the Poplar Creek Golf Course in San Mateo on October 12th at 6:15 p.m. Please visit sanmateopoa.org for more details.
I think we can just slowly flip through the next slides. But, but yeah, I, I don't know why I thought to take on more. And so this year, we, as you saw, will be doing a comedy night as well. You know, I feel that we don't get very many opportunities to engage in comedy in the Peninsula. So I thought, what better way for our department to take the reins again on that? The joke is laughter is the breast medicine. So we want to share that joy with our community and, and really just bring attention and awareness to this cause. So I appreciate you guys having me here today. We could probably keep flipping through. That's going to be our comedy night. And then this will be, this is a, what to look out for, for our patrol cars this year. And then for more information, you can visit our San Mateo Police Officers Association webpage. But thank you guys for having me here tonight.
Thank you, and I would like to read off a resolution before you go away.
Sorry.
Okay, no, no, no. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month remains dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates in the United States more than 297,000 cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed this year and over 43,000 people will die. And whereas too many women do not utilize mammography at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method of detection to decrease death rates. And whereas increased breast cancer screening increases early detection, reduces death, increases life expectancy, decreases late-stage cancer diagnoses, and increases five-year survival rates. And whereas organizations such as the American Cancer Society, Susan G. Komen for the Cure, and our very own San Mateo Police Department and Police Officers Association are planning community events this month to promote awareness, conduct screenings, raise funds for research, and educate the community about the importance of early detection. And whereas the City of San Mateo supports breast cancer research and wishes to educate residents about detection, risk factors, and treatment, and encourages our city to go pink in October to raise awareness, promote early screening, and honor those affected by breast cancer. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Lisa Diaz Nash of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of San Mateo and further wish to recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families who are a source of love, encouragement, and support, and applaud the efforts of medical professionals and researchers working hard to fund and find a cure. Lisa Diaz Nash, dated September 16th, 2024.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now we are moving on to the Consent Calendar. So City Clerk, could you please read the Consent Calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City of San Mateo Conflict of Interest Code, 2024 Biennial Update. Item number five, Electronic Document Management System Agreement. Item number six, Hillsdale High School and 31st Avenue Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project Grant Application. Item number seven, Peninsula Clean Energy Solar and Storage on Public Buildings Program Power Purchase Agreement. Item number eight, 42nd and King Ridge Storm Drain Repair Contract. Item number nine, Citywide Small Trash Capture Project Amendment. Item number 10, Fashion Island Boulevard and 19th Avenue Class Four Bikeway Project Grant Application. Item number 11, Standby Temporary Generator for Dale Avenue Pump Station Upgrade Change Order. Item number 12, Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestor 2 Mixer Repair Agreement. Item number 13, Assessment District and Fee Administration Services Agreement. Item number 14, Public Works Department, Community Development Department, and Police Department Classification Updates. Item number 15, Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Agreement Authority. Item number 16, Staff Augmentation Services for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Amendment. Item number 17, Grand Jury Report, Restaurant Exteriors and Neglected Space Response Letter. Item number 18, November 5th, 2024 Statewide Propositions and HR 6639 Poverty Line Act of 2023 Recommendations. And finally, item number 19, Police Sergeants Association Memorandum of Understanding Changes.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Is there any member of the Council who would like to pull an item from the, Councilmember Hedges?
I'd like to pull item number 10.
Number 10. Okay, any other items anyone wants to pull? No? Okay, if any member of the public who wished to comment on any Consent Calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for Consent Calendar items only. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment?
Madam Mayor, we have not received any requests to speak on any of the Consent Calendar items.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion from Council to approve the Consent Calendar except for item 10?
So moved, second.
Well done. City Clerk?
Sorry, would you mind repeating the, the motion and the second?
Oh, the Consent Calendar without number 10?
So moved.
I have a move and the second was?
Everybody on the Council.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
As always, number one.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. So Councilmember Hedges, over to you.
I just wanted to highlight this because it's a much-needed project. I see bikers constantly trying to make their way through this area, which from Mariners Island and the Bridge Point Shopping Center is a direct bike route to the Caltrain station at, uh, at midway between Hillsdale and San Mateo. So a good location for this bike lane. But I also want to remind the council and staff that the Pulte development contributed a quarter of a million dollars for improvement to the intersection, and automobiles and the free flow of automobiles should not be left out of this when we get, get the bike lanes. And I realize we've gotten somewhere in the neighborhood of about $500,000 in grants for this, which is great. Should be, I assume the staff can tell me probably pretty well all the money we need.
Okay. Is there any public comment on item number 10?
Madam Mayor, I have not received any request to speak on item number 10.
All right, thank you. I will close public comment. Do I have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, City Clerk?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
And Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Clerk, how many requests do we have to speak in public comment?
Madam Mayor, in chambers, I have three requests to speak for general public comment. And in the virtual environment, I'm seeing more hands being raised. Just a couple more seconds to do so. We will call the last speaker. So if you intend to speak on general public comment, please raise your hand now. So Madam Mayor, we have a total of eight requests to speak, and Lynn will be the last speaker. So per our adopted rules and procedures, that would be three minutes per speaker. So when I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that'll be greatly appreciated. And our first speaker for general public comment will be Lucas Chin, followed by Thomas Weismiller and Tricia Pierce.
Hi, everyone. Did you know that 106 residents living in San Mateo and Santa Clara County experienced food insecurity? My name is Lucas Chin. I'm currently a high school senior from San Carlos. Throughout high school, I've become increasingly passionate about supporting members of our community who experience food insecurity, as I know from volunteering on Second Harvest Food Bank. For the past few months, I've been aiming to set up community fridges to help combat food insecurity in our neighborhoods. Members of the community can contribute to or take food from these fridges, and it's a wonderful way to mobilize residents to support one another. I'm hoping to raise awareness about my initiative to find organizations, churches, or partners or corporations that would be willing to sponsor a fridge outside of their building as soon as possible. I'm looking for any volunteers that would be willing to help out, to help out with this initiative. I've reached out to hundreds of organizations and contacted multiple cities along the peninsula. And while interest in the mission has been high, commitment has been harder to obtain. To be a fridge host and partner only requires to have the fridge on your property, and I already have an action plan to take care of all other logistics, including cleaning the fridge on a weekly basis, managing conflicts, and maintaining the supply of food in the fridge. I've also received mentorship from the national nonprofit organization Fridge, which runs several successful fridges around the country and has shared best practices with me. Again, I am hoping that you will help me in my fight to combat food insecurity, and please support me in providing me with any organizations that would be willing to sponsor a fridge. Please feel free to contact me at wholefridges@gmail.com. That's W-H-O-L-E-F-R-I-D-G-E-S at gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Thomas Weismiller, followed by Trina Pierce.
Mayor Nash, members of the City Council, thank you for your service to the city of San Mateo. I was the founder of 20 billion reasons to vote no on Regional Measure 4, the Bay Area Housing Bond. Our hastily organized committee caused Bafa, MTC, and A-BAG to withdraw it from the ballot after our attorney submitted a letter of demand and a writ of mandate because of a math error and misleading language on the ballot statement. Three of you endorsed this bond. Affordable housing is a good intention, but if RM4 was passed, it would have made housing less affordable. Why? Because a bond is a tax. To pay off this $20 billion bond would have cost $48 billion over 53 years. 20 billion reasons is going to stick around to be a watchdog over the Council of Governments, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and the Association of Bay Area Governments. We suggest that council members be cautious and do their due diligence before endorsing anything that comes out of 375 Beale Street. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Trina Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor Lisa Dash, and to the other city council members and to the staff. My name is Trina Pierce. I'm from North Central. I'm here just to represent some of the people in North Central, especially the seniors. And I know you guys don't, can't do anything about this, but FEMA can. And they are not understanding that they don't, that they still have to pay insurance. So I'm a little worried about them not paying their flood insurance because the new maps have not been presented to us yet. So this is something I'm trying to explain to them. But I just want a lot of them, they've been calling me or I see them when I'm walking. Some of them can't hear that well and don't understand me. So I just want a lot of people to know that, you know, they still have to pay their flood insurance until after October, November, when we do get the new flood maps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving to our virtual environment, our first commenter via Zoom will be Bill Imal. Bill, please unmute your mic.
Hello, San Mateo City Council. Am I coming through all right, or is there mic issues?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Fantastic. So first of all, good evening, city council members and members of the public who happened to show up tonight. I thank you so much for your time. I would, this is non-agenda public comment, would like to ask the city council, I, I know you guys can't do anything about this, and there's no response. However, I would like them to look out for our safety, specifically in terms of these roving migrant gangs that seem to be coming into major cities throughout the country. We've seen this happen in Aurora, Colorado, and most recently in Springfield, Ohio, with them, you know, just showing up in the tens of thousands, being bussed in by NGOs, mainly led by Jewish groups, unfortunately. And
Thank you. Please, please address subject matter jurisdiction.
Yes, yes. No, I'm speaking to the city. I'm allowed to add context, am I not? I, I, I don't want to come in without context. That's going to come across as racist, and I'm definitely not racist. So just for the safety of public residents, in order to protect the integrity of the city and the integrity of the land that we live on and live in, I would like the city to take preemptive measures, if possible, maybe pass a resolution disavowing illegal immigration, simply for the fact that our residents and cats and dogs and everyone in the city can stay safe and not worry about being barbecued out in the open by Haitian migrants.
Please, please address.
It's not too much to ask.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am addressing the city council. Please stop cutting me off. This is my time, my friend. I, I have three minutes, and I haven't said anything inappropriate. So am I allowed to continue, City Attorney? Or are we going to stay silent and just let me ramble on while I'm asking a question? Everyone in America deserves to be safe, and there is no reason for anyone in America to fear having themselves, their children, and their pets being eaten by these Haitian migrants. They eat people and
Thank you. Please, please address a matter addressing the city's jurisdiction.
Yes, this is. I'm afraid about the illegal immigration that's going to come to this city. It's happening all over America. And the fact that, you know, we're here in California right now, and you're not allowing me to address an issue before it becomes an issue is unconstitutional. It's, it's not right. You know, you might as well go and stuff us all into concentration camps. What are you, the next Hitler or something?
Thank you. Your time is up. Madam Mayor, we may want to take a brief recess.
I think that's a great idea. We'll take a, a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene shortly. Everyone, we're about ready to get started. Thank you, everyone, for taking your seats or your stands, wherever you are. Okay, before we begin, I'd like to read this following statement. "We welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. And if speaking during general public comment, they must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. We in San Mateo condemn hateful, anti-Semitic, Islamophobic, and racist speech in the strongest possible terms. At a time of rising anti-Semitism and hate, hate speech, we do not stand for it. Hate speech can have real-life consequences. The country has had numerous mass shooting events, including at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando in 2016, the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh in 2018, and the Poe Chabad in 2019. We embrace the rights of all individuals in our community to be who they are in terms of their sexuality, gender, religious orientations, beliefs, and country of origin, and we will always do so." Let's continue.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Herman. Herman, please unmute your mic.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Herman. I come here from Haiti last year. It's been a long and hard journey. Highest NGO told me I come, I get money, I get job, I get food, but it's all lie. I was told I get steak, but I get street cats. I don't eat them for food, I eat them for fun.
Please, excuse me, please address subject matter jurisdiction within the city.
Yes, sir. My, my, ask my question for city. Yes, sir. My question for city is, please give me access to animal shelter. Please, give me, please, give me.
Thank you. You have been warned to address subject matter jurisdiction. You refuse to do so, your permission to speak will be removed. Our next speaker will be Eva. Eva, please unmute your mic.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I noticed that right after you guys came back from your meeting, you read straight from the ADL handbook. I just want to remind the council before I speak, it is not okay for members of the legislative body to silence or stifle comments about certain groups of people that are of concern to the public, no matter how much the legislative body disagrees with the statements or sentiments that are being shared by members of the public. Slurs, name-calling, or pointing out uncomfortable statistics do not count as disruptive commentary. Okay? I'm sure your city attorney can tell you so, and you can't come back to a meeting and say that you express, you know, feelings of acceptance for everybody in the community and then stop certain speech that you guys disagree with. So what I would like to talk about echoes the last person because I am very concerned about my safety in this state as well as the country, and I am asking the council to adopt legislation that will stop the massive influx of Haitian immigrants.
Please, please address subject matter jurisdiction.
I just asked you, I want you to adopt a city legislation that is in your purview, correct?
No, it's not.
You have been warned, and your permissions to speak will be removed. Our next speaker will be Andy. Andy, please unmute your mic. Andy, please unmute your mic. Andy, we're not able to hear you. If you could...
Move on.
We are not getting Andy, so Andy, we will now move on to our final speaker, which will be Lynn. Lynn, please unmute your mic.
Good evening. My name is Lynn. I'm from Alert Door Service. I have owned a building on the Peninsula Avenue corridor between Bayswater and Peninsula and Amphlet. We are the, some of the buildings that have been slated to, subject to eminent domain for the last 15 years. It's been really a roller coaster ride. I know it's on the agenda tonight. I believe it's item 22. And as I would just like to say that us and...
We will get to that item, and we will open it up for public comment. This is currently the time for non-agendized public comment.
Ah, okay. Then I will hang with you guys then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Okay, sure.
So I just want to tell all of the speakers tonight that if they have any issues that they feel weren't addressed here, I live at 904 Wharf Side Road in San Mateo, California. If you want to come and exchange ideas with me, I'll be happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let us move on. We have no more public comment, correct?
Correct.
So I'm going to close public comment and move on to the public hearing, Consolidated Annual Progress and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant 2023 to 2024 Program Year Adoption. And I believe Rachel Horst, our Housing Manager, is going to give a presentation. Thank you, Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and council members. Rachel Horst, Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. And I'm pleased to present the 2023-24 Consolidated Annual Progress and Evaluation Report, or the CAPER, as it's known. The CAPER is a required report from the U.S. Department of Housing and Community Development, or HUD. And it is a report on, broadly speaking, how the city is spending community development block grant funds. So just for a bit of background, for those who may not be too familiar with CDBG, as we call it, the city receives, I'm sorry, that word is missing, the city receives CDBG funds from HUD each year. I will go over in a later slide approximately how much. And HUD requires annual reporting and planning. So there's a cycle that we go through every year. You may be familiar with the Annual Action Plan process or the Consolidated Plan, which covers a five-year period, so it's a five-year plan. Every year, we come before council with that plan for how CDBG funds will be spent and which organizations will be funded in the activities that they will be performing. And these plans are informed by extensive community engagement and a needs assessment. And in the plan, there are detailed goals and budgeting that HUD requires every entitlement jurisdiction to provide. So the CAPER is that report on how we're doing on the goals that we identified and the budget that we outlined in the action plan. It's due after the close of the program year or the fiscal year, so the end of June. It's due two months later, so this year it's due to HUD by September 28th. So this serves as the public hearing for this document, which has been available to the public, and I will go over that on a later slide as well. So CDBG funding in the city of San Mateo takes a specific form. I may be familiar with the community funding program. So CDBG is broken down into different funding categories or spending categories. But in San Mateo, the community funding program is that annual process, public process, where the city invites applications and then through review with the Community Relations Commission and the city council, then sub-grants and awards funds to community organizations serving the public in these categories. So public services is the biggest one. There are nine organizations funded, providing a range of services to meet basic human needs, youth services, counseling, senior services, and so on. There's also minor home repairs, and the city funds to organizations that provide repairs and accessibility modifications to homeowners. Public facilities is its own category, so the city funds capital projects for local nonprofits that are, that serve the public and that are open to the public. And also city-led, so public works, street sidewalk and safety projects. Also fair housing services. And it must be said for administration because CDBG is a very administrative-heavy program, and so up to 20% of yearly funds can be used for administration. So here's the overview of CDBG funds for this past program year because we're looking back on 2023-24. The entitlement amount was just under 780,000. The city sub-granted these funds to nine agencies serving just over 4,000 unduplicated individuals. So on the right side is the list of those community organizations providing a range of vital services to the community. The city also funded Rebuilding Together Peninsula and the Center for Independence for Individuals with Disabilities through the Minor Home Repair Program, and 11 homes received a variety of repairs through that program. The city also funded the Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, which assisted 33 people, business owners. And the city funded Project Sentinel, which served 11 clients with fair housing services. And finally, there's a city-led project, city-public works-led project for traffic signal and pedestrian improvements, generally around the Third Avenue, Norfolk Avenue area. So these organizations and this project are intended to benefit low-to-moderate income households. That's a hallmark of the CDBG program. And the CAPER describes how they performed. And speaking generally, most organizations are coming close to or exceeding the annual goal for the number served. So we are meeting our goals. We're on track to meet our five-year goals. One area where there have been challenges in recent years is with minor home repair, which is due in large part to the continued high cost of construction from the pandemic and continues to now, and also staff turnover in one of the organizations, but they still performed relatively well. And another area that HUD is very concerned with and would like the city to describe in the CAPER is how we leverage our funds. So CDBG funds are very well-leveraged here and used in combination with local city sources, but also other funds that we receive, for example, from the state, the permanent local housing allocation, or PLHA. So I've listed here the organizations that did not receive CDBG but received PLHA funds. And so likewise, we're providing services, housing-related services, to lower-income households in the community. The CAPER has been available for public comment and review from this period of August 30th through today. During that time, on September 5th, there was a special meeting of the Community Relations Commission, or the CRC. The CRC recommended unanimously that the city council adopt this CAPER and submit it to HUD by the September 28th deadline. The recommendation before you tonight is to adopt the 23-24 Consolidated Annual Progress and Evaluation Report for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So after that brief presentation, I'm happy to take questions on the CAPER and take comments.
Anyone with questions? Yes, Councilmember Lorraine.
Madam Mayor, would we like to take public comment first?
What a good idea. Thank you.
This is for item number 20. I have no request to speak in council chambers, and I have no request to speak via Zoom.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you to the mayor. Thank you, Rachel, for your presentation. I did have one question about the portion of the CAPER that refers to racial and ethnic composition of families assisted. Because I, in the narrative, it seems to compare those who have been assisted in a table which appears to be those served by CDBG funds to the broader city makeup. And I'm just curious as to whether that, you know, why would we not potentially compare those who are assisted with CDBG funds to perhaps the composition of the areas that qualify for CDBG?
Well, to answer your question, I'll start with saying that if you look at CAPERs from year to year to year, they will look very similar in form because we're following a template, if you will, that is filled out online that HUD requires us to populate. So the chart that is shown under, it's marked CR10, that's the name of the form, is filled out not by staff, but actually by another program that is supposed to integrate with the program we use for this, that we use to submit the report to HUD. And so we can manually update it, but that's what we're working with. That's what the chart says. But the opportunity to really look at what the numbers say and make sense of them can be done in the narrative below, right? And so what we did was just look at the numbers and compare it to the population at large. I would bet, but do not recall if this was how it was done in last year's CAPER. But to answer your question, it can be compared to, for example, the block groups that are in the target, the CDBG target area. We can look at racial and ethnic composition. I believe those variables are available, not having looked at the ACS for a few years, but I believe those are available. So if that data, those data are available, we can add that here to the narrative. That is something we could do. We could certainly do it in next year's report and likely can do it before we submit it at the end of this month.
Thank you. And I noticed in this table also that, as was noted in the narrative, about 1,000 out of the 4,000 surveyed were not listed in the totals with regard to the racial composition. And can you speak to that, or is that also something that I think like is being populated in our table and we don't have a lot of control over?
Yeah, so where this is coming from is the sub-grantees, the, I'll just pick names, right, the Rebuilding Togethers or the CIIS or any of those organizations that I showed in the slide that are receiving CDBG funds. They are all reporting in the same system, and that system is supposed to populate, like you say, it's called IDIS, that HUD uses to report, to provide the CAPER and all the other annual reporting and planning documents. So I do not think that there is a lot of flexibility and certainly not much control on staff's part just because it's those organizations that are reporting on the people that they serve, and that's information that the recipient of the service is volunteering. So I think that's where there's a little bit of a disconnect sometimes. It's just that the individual doesn't report that information, the organization doesn't note it, and then, you know, we see it at the end of the year. This is what we have data on, and there are a lot of people that are just not accounted for in these categories. So I do not know how much staff can really influence other than, other than to communicate directly with our sub-recipients, with these organizations, and say, "Well, how are you collecting this information? You know, can we get a little bit more accurate numbers?" We ask our grantees to give accurate numbers on everything else, right? So it's not unreasonable. We could have that, you know, conversation with them and figure out, "Well, how can we get more sort of useful data points here?"
Thank you. And I guess I was curious about... When I read the report, I saw a number of services that I see come out of, I guess, either CDBG funds or perhaps PLHA funds. And I started thinking about other services that are provided from organizations within the city or perhaps nearby that may not be accounted here. And is it, like, maybe those provided at El Camino House, the Home Key Project on El Camino Real, or even at the Macedonia Church in North Central, which has second harvest food boxes given. Is it safe to say that if they're not included in this report, that's because those services are at the moment not receiving CDBG or PLHA funds?
That's correct. However, there is the narrative portion of each section, right? So there is a section, if you look at the report, my computer just went to sleep, but on preventing homelessness or preventing, I think, families from becoming homeless. You can cast a wide net with that narrative and say, "Well, there are many services in the community." And we do, we do discuss some agencies that the city doesn't fund, but we know are operating in San Mateo and are part of that ecosystem. And so that is something that we could add to the narrative. Just because it's not funded by CDBG doesn't mean that we can't mention it as part of that. And that is something that HUD would want us to do, is to paint an accurate picture of all the services that are available, sort of working together. It's all part of leveraging that CDBG program.
Yeah, no further questions.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, just to dovetail, I think on the line of questioning, I hear underneath this conversation is sort of a desire to have a more comprehensive global picture of community need and where, what organizations and resources are directed to our San Mateo residents to meet those needs. And it occurred to me that, you know, the county has stood up an equity, you know, department, and we have a very robust health department as well, which are working together to help map those resources. And there may be an opportunity or interest to invite them to come and do a presentation to council so that we can better learn about their data dashboards and, you know, because I think that there's, there's the, there's what gets in the required report, right? And then there's what information does the council benefit from for our own education? And then there's what information does the council benefit from for our own education and, and using this platform as a way to further extend that education to the community and make it as accessible as possible. So I, I offer that as a suggestion to kind of expand on that idea.
Thank you very much. So no other comments, questions? You do, okay.
Thank you for a great presentation. Just to kind of add on to what they were just talking about, I noticed on one of the, one of the, I think it was CR20 graphs, that, you know, it says there's no homeless households being provided housing units. That's specifically because it's not being provided by the, by the city, but it is being provided within the city. So just to reiterate, I think what you've already said, but we should try to capture that because we do have, right?
Yes, absolutely. Sometimes the charts, if I may say, are not terribly informative. They're, they're very focused on what is happening with CDBG, but if you only read that, then you think, oh, that's all there is. That's not all there is. So we can make up for that in the narrative section, yes.
And then my second question was, you mentioned that one of the places that you're, you're finding a deficit is in trying to, to provide minor home repair.
Yeah.
Who, who's the administrator of that, that, those services?
This year, the city funded Rebuilding Together Peninsula and CIID, so Center for Independence for Individuals with Disabilities.
Well, it just occurred to me, because there were so many union and trade people here earlier tonight, that we might be able to partner with the trade unions to see if they could use those as training opportunities, meaning provide the labor for free and we just have to provide the materials. So just a suggestion, we could go to the Labor Council for that. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Councilmember Hedges, anything?
I will say that Labor has done that in the past. They built the Boys and Girls Club in North Shoreview, totally free of cost. I don't know what situation, I know that they've got a number of people and some of them on the bench right now, so it might be doable. I don't know. You can ask them.
Okay. Great. All right, then. If no other comments, questions? Do I have a motion to adopt the 2324 Consolidated Annual Progress and Evaluation Report for submission to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development?
So moved.
City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, use of former Fire Station 25 as a police traffic substation. We'll receive a presentation from Chief Barberini and Lieutenant Matt Earnshaw.
Good evening, and I'm there, Councilmembers. I am thankful to be here tonight to share a presentation with you on, you think, the former San Mateo Fire- Station 25 as a police traffic substation. This station is a city-owned facility that has remained vacant since 2021. And we know, as, when I was, I came up with this idea, this concept, a couple of years ago, when I was managing the traffic unit and looking for ways of making our unit more efficient in different ways, and also to bring our officers and sergeants together because they currently are in different places within our own building. And sometimes that is, they're bifurcated enough where, kind of, we can lose a little bit of what we need to do and get done and plan for the days and things like that. So we know, traffic is increasingly becoming an issue of citywide interest, and the traffic unit continues to find ways to expand, be more efficient while enhancing our services. Our traffic unit equipment, when it is not on the street, we usually have to store it at the corp yard. This is the building we were talking about, is located at 545 Barniston Avenue. As you can see, it sits on the corner with Alameda de Las Polgas, and there is a small driveway on the Alameda side that the firefighters used to use to park their personal vehicles and other equipment for the fire department. A lot of, some of the benefits that we see using this location is just the several access routes to all corners of San Mateo. When you sit there at 92, you are almost in the middle of the city, and officers would be able to leave from there and get to the east side by using 92, get to our far west side using 92. But you can also access Alameda to the south part of our town, all the way to the northern section of our town, by eliminating some of those traffic issues that you see during the day. Sometimes it takes 15, 20 minutes just to get to a grocery store in San Mateo. And so we believe this access availability, if our officers are working, would be able to get to calls for service in a more timely manner than they already are. Also, along Alameda, there's nine schools. There's the Beresford Park and Recreation Center, the Senior Center, all along this corridor. We believe our occupancy would increase our visibility to the neighborhood and just even San Mateo in itself. This would also allow our patrol officers to have a place to write their reports while they're on their beat, and it will help them provide better response times to calls of service. We do not foresee this, we foresee this being a minimal impact to the neighborhood, and we'll address those in a second here. So some of the actions we've already taken, on July 10th, our San Mateo traffic officers personally walked a 500-foot radius of this building, which encompassed 300 homes. And they put a flyer, if not, if they didn't speak to a resident, to discuss this. And then we asked the residents on that flyer to, we encouraged them to share thoughts by email before August 1st. We received 28 email responses, and 20 responded supporting the concept. Two were opposed, and then six responded just asking for clarification in terms of noise level. Some were just worried about lights and sirens. The fire department, they do respond to calls, and their lights and sirens, they have to use their lights and sirens. We, as a police department, probably, I don't want to put a percentage on it, but not all calls that we respond to require lights and sirens. And then there was some concern that the officers that are utilizing the substation would potentially be parking their personal vehicles in the neighborhood. Also on Nextdoor, the social media thread, there is overwhelming positive comments. There was one complaint that the substation is too far west in the city limits. So last week, I sent a follow-up email to all who shared their thoughts, informing them about tonight's study session. Our plan for the facility is, will be used primarily during our daytime hours, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This would, there would be three to four officers and sergeants working out of that building during that time. And then we do have a traffic officer that works till 9:00 and 10:00 p.m. at night. Addressing the parking, we discussed with the traffic officers or traffic unit, and right now, the, the best thing for us, just operationally, would be for them to park at the police department on Franklin Parkway, and then drive the motorcycles to the facilities if they don't take these motorcycles home at night, which is an option to them. So I, I think that would shift, and more officers would take their motorcycles home, which would allow them to be on our streets even longer, because they wouldn't have to go back to the station and change and leave. And then there will be occasional patrol vehicles, and then the small driveway off of Alameda can be used up to three vehicles, which we believe would be used for some of our traffic equipment, which is trucks and things like that, and I'll get into that. But for the noise, again, the majority of our calls for service do not require lights and sirens, a response. And we currently use BMW motorcycles, which are significantly quieter than the Harley-Davidsons we used to drive. And we're currently evaluating electric motorcycles, which could be stored and charged at this location. And again, that would deal with the noise tremendously, bringing it down. Our response times, we have noticed with our other substations at Parkside and our downtown, that our response times when officers use the facilities are better from there than have to going all the way from the south end on Franklin Parkway. And we think these facilities, they allow for our patrol officers to stay on their beat rather than going back to the station, typing a report, and then have to leaving the south end to get to a call all the way on Peninsula Avenue. We think this is a location that would allow us for those better response times. And then just so there's clarification on some of the traffic equipment that we store, there's a van and an F-150 truck, the speed trailers and message boards, and a small truck for towing. Those are, the message boards and trailers are typically deployed on the street, so we're not storing them in a police station or in the substation. They will have to come back every once in a while, just so we can recalibrate and do things there, but then they would be out probably within the next day. And then the financial impact of this is minimal, and we believe it will be absorbed in our current budget. We're looking at some paint, because the building is old, adding some desks, and then connectivity for our computers, and just so our officers are able to write those reports and send them, however, the computers work. And then also an alarm for the building as well. And, but we can absorb that in our current budget. And then we are asking just, we're seeking further direction from council on, on this project. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Anybody? Council-
Madam Mayor, would you like to take public comment first?
Public comment, I am not, yes, thank you very much.
And just in preparation for that, I just need a few moments, I'm going to pull up another slide, which may warrant reading again.
Great, thank you very much. We welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item, and if speaking during general public comment, they must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. So do we have any public comment?
We do. Madam Mayor, I have received one request to speak via Zoom, so that, per our council rules and procedures, that'll be three minutes per speaker. I have not received any requests in council chambers, and our first and only speaker will be Santim. Santim, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, good evening. Fuck Jews, fuck niggers.
Please address, excuse me, please address subject matter jurisdiction.
All right, yes, I would like the city to adopt-
Cut it, stop.
Madam Mayor, we have no further requests to speak.
Thank you very much. I'm closing public comment. Bring you back to council. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you for the presentation. I was hoping to just get a little bit more in detail about the facility itself, if, if you don't mind, or if we have that handy. Like, how lar, how many square feet is it? What?
Yeah, I don't know the square footage. The, the, when the, when the fire department occupied it, there was room for one truck and one bay. They also had sleeping quarters, which we wouldn't use, we're not, we're not asking to use sleeping quarters. So it was a, it's a fairly small building. There is a training tower behind the building that we would not anticipate using for anything, but it's a fairly small footprint.
And it fits into the neighborhood, it almost looks like another house.
Looks like a house. It's a large lot, it's a corner lot, but the, the square footage of the building itself is, I'd say, about half the size of the lot relative to the picture that you saw.
Thank you. So I, I think that, you know, we have a really exceptional response time in our PD. We just had a whole assessment of, of our capacity, and we're in really stellar shape. And, you know, where, when I think about the traffic management needs, I, for me, the, the greater need is more on the east side and not so much on, on the west side, in terms of reach and accessibility, and where we're getting bottlenecked and where it's actually harder to respond. And, and so, you know, this, this council item, you know, sort of came, came to us kind of teed up, right? Where it's like, do you want to do this or nothing, right? And I guess as, you know, as somebody who thinks a lot about the, the incredible value of our city land assets and, and how we can best utilize those land assets to, to take care of our employees and, and ensure that we're, you know, we're delivering on the highest possible community services, you know, it, it just strikes me as sort of a question of, you know, if not this, then what, right? What is the best use of this, and how we actually explored all the possible options? Maybe this is a good option for now, because it's a low-budget solution that utilizes underutilized space and solves a problem. But in the long term, is this the highest, best solution to meet all community needs? And I raise this because I, you know, I keep on thinking about, now, five years after I joined the council, I'm thinking about our, our folks at the corp yard, our employees at the corp yard, who've been asking for a lounge area, right? When they're working at all hours of the day and night better, so that they can go home without, you know, an extended commute that can take sometimes two and a half hours. And, and so when we're not doing our utmost to utilize beds, I mean, honestly, it kind of hurts me to think that, that beds have been empty since 2021, when, when we might have found a solution to, to give some of our lowest-wage workers, our essential workers, a place to rest after their, you know, after their shifts. And so I, you know, I'm kind of struggling here with, with this item, because while I, you know, I know that traffic is an issue and traffic management is an issue, and I know that we're facing a significant budget, budget constraints, and we want to find, you know, immediate solutions that, that are, are not going to break our bank here. There's, there's, for me, an unresolved question about what, you know, bigger question, about what is really the, the ultimate goal and use of this land. And so I want to, I want to pose it that way and ask, you know, ask staff how they've been thinking about this.
So I, I can jump in on that. So I've spoken with the, I've brought forward with the council as part of the budget process that we want to look at our real property assets over in the future. Right now, the facility is just being used as a storage facility, if you go in there right now, so it's underutilized, and there was an opportunity from, you know, in talking with the chief in the police department, to be able to dispatch out. I know that traffic has been a major issue for this community, and hearing from our police department that we can get to all areas of the city quickly as an opportunity, that's when, I actually believe the council directed us to bring this item back forward. I think Deputy Mayor Newsom saw three nods, asking for us to bring this item back for additional research on it. But as I was talking about, just the overall real property portfolio and strategy, it's one of, you know, one of the many sites that we'll have to look at and look at highest and best use down the line. But in the interim, I think it's the opportunity for the police department to see how, how it works out for them. Chief, I don't know if you have anything else to add on that?
No, the only thing, I understand your, the, the feedback regarding our traffic hotspots, for lack of a better term, in the city. I will tell you, the most off, the, the most frequent area that we get complaints is the Alameda corridor, especially during the school year. Mornings and afternoons is our most challenging time along that, that corridor, only because of the, the, the number of schools in such close proximity to one another. So that's the only, the, the only comment I'd have, not that the east side does not have-
So that's the only, the only comment I'd have, not that the east side does not have significant traffic challenges, they, they exist throughout the city, but the, that corridor is a particularly challenging one for us as far as trying to maintain adequate staffing levels along that, along that area.
Thank you. I mean, I guess I would just say that I think there's, you know, some of the, some of the ways that we can better mitigate traffic is in our own street designs, right? And so, Alameda has seen very, very few improvements in terms of the circulation plans. And so, I, you know, I, I'll just round it out with, you know, I appreciate putting underutilized spaces to good use at low cost for our security system and a paint job, that sounds great. My, my hope would be that we could actually look at the organizational needs holistically. If there are beds empty, and, and our, our Public Works employees need a resting spot or lounge area, even if they have to drive to it, I think that's a, you know, that's a no-brainer.
So note taken, absolutely. The one thing that I just want to be able to speak to, just on this specific site, if we were to change the usage of what we're currently at, it triggers a whole nother level of costs in order to create the, the bunks or the beds and areas. So at this point in time, the way we're utilizing it is trying to do a like-for-like, and so it's, that's why we're able to do this minimally. But point taken, just about looking at places for our staff to rest, or to be able to sleep overnight, understanding that they're driving from far away.
Yeah, and my, my, I don't want to misspeak. I, I think that, you know, the feedback I've heard from, from folks at the corp yard is not that they want a place to actually, like, sleep, they just want a dignified place to rest. That's, that's better than a cold bench, you know? And so, I don't, I don't think that it would trigger, like, creating a lounge area, I don't think that that would trigger a use change, but I don't, you know, not my area of expertise, obviously. But I, I don't think the need is necessary to create bunks. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Hedges.
I appreciate what Councilmember Lee said. I will tell you that I looked through and read all of the comments on this, and by far, the people in the neighborhood are thrilled with this change. There are, the only real worries I saw were sirens and traffic, and you've obviously explained that tonight, and that was a minority of the people that wrote to us. In line with Councilmember Lee's comments, there's something in planning called land banking. So, you know, we can consider this land banking if we find a higher use. I would say that I would love to have seen this on the east side, and maybe smack people around a little bit that are running the lights along, and, and not clearing the intersections along Fashion Island and 19th Avenue, because it is a total roadblock at night. It's back on many nights as bad as it was before the pandemic. And that's going to affect us in a lot of ways. One of them is, people have to get to Bridge Point with all these new locations, we've had to spend money, which not only helps jobs and other issues, but brings money into the city. So I don't know if it would ever be acceptable, but the county's bought 1500 Fashion Island, and they only have use for part of that property at this time, so maybe at some point, we can put something in that neighborhood, because just remember, there's only one way to get into my neighborhood, it's over a bridge. So in a real bad situation, that whole island would be stranded. It would have to be a number of bridges go down, but I know in the last earthquake, they halted travel over until they checked them.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We do have a substation, another firehouse over there.
Right, I know, and I supported that at the time.
Yeah, and that, that's been, that's been an enormous help when it comes to response times, and I think that, I mean, we're not recreating the wheel here. We, we looked at that model when we, when we came up with this, so hopefully they can show us.
But I support this whole hardly, I think it's a great idea.
Councilmember Lorraine, anything from you?
No real questions. I appreciate the presentation, and I support the recommendation. Thank you.
Excellent. Deputy Mayor?
I was just wondering, does anyone know how much rent San Mateo Consolidated Fire has been using or contributing currently to be using the space? Oh, I can answer. It's a loaded question. It's zero. So I see this as a win in that respect. I, I grew up, I walked, I walked home past this station for nine years of my life, so I know the station very well, and this neighborhood very well. But I also hear what Councilmember Lee is saying, and it occurred to me, because we, we were, we've been negotiating with our Public Works contract, and one of the things that was mentioned to Mayor Diaz Nash and I, was the concept of, and particularly when there's flooding or there's emergency response, we have Public Works employees who, you know, who live two hours away. And so, it, what we talked to with them, and they actually were, they lit up about this idea, was that in emergency situations or emergency response situations, having a bunk house available to them would be very helpful. So if they're on overtime and they're working a 12, 13-hour shift, instead of having to drive two hours home, and then get up four hours later and drive two hours back, the idea to be able to use or share the bunk houses is something that has been brought up, and I think is interesting. I think while we're not talking about doing this day one, you know, from what I've heard from the police chief and some of the, the police department are that the bunk houses are not, not used a great deal. They are used, but not as, not to, not to max occupancy, they could be used. So I would like us to keep an eye on the idea of making both of these bunk house, you know, bunk house environments available to Public Works employees, particularly when we're in an emergency or, you know, extreme overtime events for them.
Thank you for raising that. I just wanted to share a little historical fact, that when, you know, when we opened the EOC with former city manager Drew Corbett, and we had, you know, around-the-clock service and operations, he was sleeping on his office floor. And so, you know, we, you know, we've gone through emergency operations, and you all know, he does a 24/7 job every day, right? Every day of the year. But, but, you know, with, with the, you know, the increased frequency of natural disasters, and, you know, unfortunately, the threats of terrorism and, and hate, there are very legitimate reasons to, to harden ourselves and make ourselves more resilient, more able to respond in a 24/7 capacity, and think about better utilizing the beds that we do have. So I really appreciate that point.
Okay. Just to add to that, I don't know that we could, as mentioned earlier, I don't know that we could accommodate that with the, the Barnison, the old Station 25, just, it was, to create the bunk house in the, in the previous shore, the, over near the fish market, it was over $800,000 because of the change of use, it was a huge investment. However, there are several beds there, and I think it would be advantageous for us to speak with our, our labor groups in the PD, saying, hey, you know, to make these available to other city employees when need be, because we do have a lot of space there. I think that even if, even if we did have the opportunity to use beds, and at the old Station 25, we're probably talking about three, maybe four, whereas down on the east side, we have, we have many, many more. So there's certainly potential there to use existing resources to provide that service when we have those types of incidents occur. I know I, I slept in my office as well. It was very, very uncomfortable.
I certainly understand that, you know, the money might not be there initially, I just think, the big picture, it's, if we're using this, we should, we should always look at all the options. And that was it. That's all the questions. I support this, and we'll be voting yes.
That's right. And I support what everyone else has said, and I think it's a great idea. I walked by there, I walked by there tonight, coming down here, and I know the neighborhood has been very, very supportive, and the schools are very excited about it, because there is so much traffic, and lots of kids getting almost hit. So I think it'll be really, really helpful. And I'd love, I would actually love for someone to really keep track about what happens, particularly with regard to the schools, so that we can really try and understand the impact, because I think it could be really big. So, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hedges?
Last comment, when we did Measure S, one of the promises to the public was for more traffic officers, and I think we've accomplished two more since then with Measure A funds, if I'm not mistaken. But they do need a place, and I think this will actually energize the amount of oversight we have over bad people, or bad, bad drivers who are causing a problem.
Great. Thank you. So with that, do I have a?
Make a motion.
We don't need anything?
We got our general direction that we need.
We don't need a motion.
Okay, okay. Okay, then let's move on to old business, US 101 Peninsula Interchange Avenue Improvements Project Update. And J. Youth, our engineering manager, is going to make a presentation, I believe.
All right. Good evening, City Council. J. Youth Engineering Manager of Public Works, and to my right, we have Leo Scott, the President of Gray Bowen Scott, the Project Advisor for the US 101 Peninsula Interchange Project. Tonight, we'll be giving an update on the project, and seeking direction from City Council on what to do next. Just quickly, here's an overview of the agenda, so we'll start first with councils for, questions for City Council, and then Leo Scott, we'll go ahead and talk about the project history, the overview, history of council decisions, as well as design alternative workshops, and then I'll take it back and talk about completed and planned projects, and then talk about summaries and staff recommendations, and then come back to City Council about questions for the council. So with that, let's jump straight into it. Questions for City Council, so think about this as we're going through the presentation. Does City Council agree with staff's recommendation to cancel the project and notify interested parties and property owners of the city's decision? B, conduct a scoping study to identify small alternative projects to address safety in the neighborhood as part of North Central Complete Streets Plan? And C, seek grant funding to implement projects that come out of the North Central Complete Streets Plan to address safety and congestion issues consistent with the original goal of the project? With that, Leo, take it away.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Jay, you can click that, or am I clicking? There we go. All right, so I'm sure you're all well, very well familiar with these two interchanges, which are actually partial interchanges, two of them, which is one of the reasons the project was initiated, was to consolidate them into what Caltrans would refer to as a full or complete interchange. Let's go to the next slide. And at the same time, address many of the issues that are found within the community as a result of that partial interchange at Poplar Avenue. So this slide highlights the consolidation of the, the concentration of accidents, primarily at the Humboldt and Poplar Avenue intersection, but you can see along some of the other streets in the neighborhood, there are challenges there. What I also want to highlight here, though, is the project purpose. So when the project was initiated back in 2015, the project purpose was to improve safety at the US 101 Poplar Off-Ramp, as well as at the East Poplar and Amphlet intersections. Then, secondly, to improve traffic operations and access at East Poplar Amphlet Intersection and at key local destinations, as well as finally improve bicycle and pedestrian safety or circulation. So that was what the project was initiated to do. And so, we'll click to the next slide, keeping that in mind. What originated from the work that the San Mateo County Transportation Authority did in partnership with the city, was to develop two primary, pretty significant improvements that are highlighted here. This is the first one, the Spread Diamond. I realize that spread might seem a little strange here, because the proximity to the freeway is quite close. But you'll see on the Tight Diamond, which is the next one, that the on-ramp gets a little bit closer. So if you click, click back for a second, Jay, and then click again, you can see it move from away to closer, that, which, go, click it again. There's the, now, it's a very seemingly small change, but it actually is a very significant one in price, which you'll see in a second. So those are the two, those are the two basic alternatives that the, that the design team had developed, and this is a closer-in look that highlights the requirement of right-of-way in order to achieve them. This is the Spread Diamond, so this is the wider look, which requires more right-of-way. It would, it would require 19 partial acquisitions and 15 full, full takes, as they're referred to in the industry. And we'll come to the cost of that in a minute. The next slide shows you the Tight Diamond, so only really a small difference, 15 partial acquisitions and 14 full. So just one less full acquisition. So quite a bit of right-of-way impact to community, to residents within the community. All right, and then this slide illustrates the, the challenges associated with that. So you can see back in 2015, here, the Tight Diamond is in the blue, the Spread Diamond is in the orange, and you've got the group, three groups here, right, design, right-of-way, and then construction. And notice in 2015, the right-of-way costs were estimated at $25 million and $37 million. That was a conceptual cost before design was fully developed. In 2020, those costs in right-of-way grew significantly to $57 million and $71 million, and then when we revisited the cost estimate more completely, having actually fully developed both alternatives, $97 million and $151 million for the right-of-way alone. The other thing to note on this slide is that that $151 million bar is nearly three times the $56 million bar for the construction of the actual roadway itself. And this is what we've referred to as being upside down, because typically, the capital or the construction cost would be probably more than double what the right-of-way costs would be. We'll come back to that in a second. All right, so this just illustrates a little bit more completely that, that upside-down nature. So on the left, we wanted to illustrate for you what a, a more typical project would look like in terms of the distribution of costs. So the design is in blue, 9%. The, the right-of-way here is 12%. The construction capital, 79%, almost 80% of the cost for a typical project would be the construction capital. This is based on the Broadway and Willow Interchange Projects with, which the SMCT has completed in the last few years. And in comparison, based on that bar chart I just showed you, the right-of-way cost here is 62% if you just average the two alternatives together, as compared to then a construction capital cost of only 28%. Again, that's the upside-down nature of this. All right, so the next slide then adds to the picture here, a little bit of the history or the development, I should say, of the funding and transportation over the last, say, 10 years or so. So one of the things that has happened here is that there's been a greater state and local investment, especially through the use of sales taxes. So the federal, the federal participation has decreased significantly over the last 20 years, and it continues to shrink even over the last 10 years. So you'll see that the federal contribution of the 101 Broadway Interchange was only 13%. It used to be that it would've been 80%. And in order to fill that 70-ish percent, what you see now is that you have Measure A at 37%, as well as local, that would be city funds, at 26%. That's a pretty significant chunk of money for a jurisdiction of your own, such as your own. And then the state contribution is at 24%. So in order to fund a project of the nature that we're talking about, it would require fund sources, at least in the mix, something simpler to this, to achieve it. The next thing, the second bullet there, is grant selection is increasingly objective. So as, as more and more money is made available, as funds are made available for funding programs, the programs become very, very specific, they have very specific objectives. Those objectives translate into very, very specific criteria, and most grants are scored. And so if you don't have a project that competes well, you don't score well, you don't secure the funds. And so that trend is, is increasing, and it's true in this third bullet, federal programs like the ATP, which is Active Transportation, INFRA, which is a major INFRA, which is a major infrastructure improvement program, and then Safe Streets for All, are all, we say, oversubscribed. They have far more applicants than they have capacity to fund. And those would be programs that this project would be typically eligible for. In addition, then, you have an increased emphasis in sustainability and environmental considerations. That's where the programs tend to focus, and the scoring is geared that way. And then the final bullet here on the left, significant investments in public transit, electric vehicle infrastructure, and other green initiatives are also very high on the priority list. All of those create an environment where we have a project that requires a tremendous amount of capital for right-of-way, doesn't compete well in programs like this, and then means that the city and the SMCTA would have to shoulder a very, very significant financial burden. So the summary here, then, on the funding challenges, accident injury rates generally fall within the statewide averages. What that means is that we don't have a situation where there's a huge safety concern, at least not from the state's perspective. As residents, that may not be the case, but from a statewide perspective, when you score it, it doesn't score very well. Significant burden is on the residents and the local businesses because of the right-of-way that I just made mention of as being required. Limited public and community support, you all know that perhaps better than I do. Lack strong regional agency support from SMCTA and MTC, partly because of everything that I've said, doesn't compete very well, it's also upside down, it's a very, very expensive project that doesn't actually score, not only does it score well, it doesn't calculate it as a high benefit cost when you do that comparison. It's high cost, relatively low benefit. Other projects illustrate the difficulties in funding due to high property values, so when we see property trending like that, the goal would be to stay away from the need for property. Unfortunately, to work the solution here requires property. And then finally, technological innovations and incentivized mode shift are difficult to create as a part of this particular project, the way it's scoped. All right. So to kind of wrap this up, the history of the council decisions. The next slide shows the timeline here. I referred to the 2015 start. That was when the project initiation document was developed. That's important because I'm going to show you the types of alternatives that were considered back at that time here in a moment. Fast forward to 2023, the last time staff was here, they were talking to you about an update and agreeing to evaluate lower right-of-way impact alternatives, which we have done, which was done in April of 2024. And so the next slide shows you, well, this is the direction that was given. Could we find a way to add one to... Could we add one to three years to complete the P A E D and P S N E in order to study those alternatives? That was assuming we could find them. SMCTA Measure A Highway Funds would be used for that, and then the right-of-way needed would be substantially reduced, assuming we could find an alternative that would reduce that. Of course, the last point here is significant. Major risk was there might not be any feasible alternatives to build. And so sure enough, we had the workshop and came to discover that back in 2015, they'd considered a pretty wide range of things that all got set aside. You can see that 15 is the alternative that I just showed you, the two different variations of that. But this, I'm not going to go through all of these. The range of these are city street improvements to major interchange reconstruction. So it's a pretty wide range of things, all intended to try and meet that purpose and need. But what the project ended up being is Alternative 15. All right. So what we concluded as a result of that discussion, after brainstorming a number of other possibilities and finding that they all fit into the existing set of 15, was that right-of-way needs and costs are driven by the southbound off-ramp. That off-ramp is what takes out that whole rule of businesses. It takes out about 13 properties, 13 to 14 properties, and it's very, very difficult to avoid doing that and actually have the off-ramp be at the Peninsula Avenue Interchange. No alternatives beyond those studied greatly reduce the right-of-way as a result, while meeting any acceptable standards that Caltrans requires of an organization to provide. Every alternative creates remnant parcels, which unfortunately are unattractive to developers, so we can't sell what we don't use. It becomes very difficult to net any value out of that. Right-of-way costs are nearly double the cost of construction capital. That's what we've talked about, being upside down. The workshop then concluded there's no feasible alternative to achieve the project's purpose as it has been conceived and unfolded over the years. The low-cost alternatives to improve traffic operations on Poplar Avenue and further build out the bicycle facility do exist, and we think should be studied further. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jay.
All right. Thank you, Leo. So now, I want to talk about a couple of projects that we actually have completed and are currently planned since the U.S. 101 Peninsula Interchange Project got started. And the first one, I want to just take a look back at the corridor that really started the U.S. 101 Peninsula Interchange, and it has to do really with two intersections. To your right is the Poplar and Amphlet intersection. There was a large amount of collisions that was collected back in 2000, 2007, that started the need for the study, and then the Poplar and Humboldt intersection. So the first intersection here, if you're looking at the image at the left, is before the improvement, and there are some yellow and red lines, and they represent the vehicle movement that are at this intersection. And specifically, we overlaid these red dots, and there are the conflict points that are there. Specifically, there are 32 conflict points that exist. And looking at the data from the planning documents from 2000, 2007, there was an average of 2.4 incidents per year. So in 2017, we completed the Poplar Safety Improvement Project, and we included this median. And ultimately, what that did is it significantly reduced the amount of turning movements that are allowed. And as a result of that, the conflict points have been reduced to about three. And if we look at the data from 2017 to 2023, the average incidence per year dropped to about 1.5, so almost one incident lower per year when compared to the original data. Next, at the intersection of Poplar and Humboldt, we have a traffic signal modification project. And really, this is a safety-first project again. Currently, if you're driving through the intersection and you're trying to make a left, vehicles are at a permissive movement, meaning that you have to navigate oncoming traffic and have to decide and be prepared for the pedestrians that are crossing there. They don't have an exclusive phase. What this project ultimately does is construct protective left turns for those vehicles to improve pedestrian and vehicle safety. If we look at the data from 2017 and 2003, there are 11 incidents per year at this intersection alone. So this is definitely a priority project. It is funded. We're currently at about 95% design, and we're expected to go to construction in the summer of 2025. So with that, I'm going to summarize what was discussed here. And in summary, there are no other alternatives that would significantly reduce the right-of-way impact costs outside of the two preferred scenarios or alternatives that were discussed. Funding the project will be difficult, and majority would be from local funds. We had discussions also with the TA, and our funding agreement for the PA E D had already expired, and they expressed that they have no intentions to renew it currently. The city already has efforts underway to improve safety, as demonstrated and explained earlier. And then proceeding with the project would continue uncertainty for local residents and business owners. We've had numerous calls from businesses in the area that discuss their hardship with refinancing their property, as well as selling their property because of values that were not, I guess, consistent with the market, and that's what we've been hearing from the residents. So with that, I want to go ahead and ask council these questions. Does City Council agree with staff's recommendation to, A, cancel the project and notify interested parties and property owners of the city's decision? B, conduct a scoping study to identify small alternative projects to address safety in the neighborhood as part of the North Central Complete Streets Plan? And C, seek grant funding to implement these projects that come out of the North Central Complete Streets Plan to address safety and congestion and issues consistent with the original goal of the project? So thank you very much, J. Youth Engineering Manager, and this is Leo Scott, and we're available for questions.
Thank you very much. Concise and a great historical overview. So who would like to start off?
Madam Mayor? I'd like to take public comment on this item, and I'm just going to pull up a slide real quick.
Thank you. Before we begin public comment, I'd like to make the following announcement. We welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic of speaking to a particular agenda item, and if speaking during general public comment, they must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to regard or disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. Thank you. So do we have any public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have one request to speak in person, and I have three requests virtually. Our last speaker will be N. Bobb. And our first speaker will be Gino. Gino, if you'd like to come up, and that'll be three minutes per speaker.
Yes.
It'll be interesting to see those speakers, so... Thank you, staff, and thank you, City Council. Thank you for your service and what you guys do. Yeah, we own two properties. My name is Gino Koch. I own the buildings with my brothers, and my brother and my sister. And we have two, 917 North Amphlet and 929 North Amphlet. We run our business out of there. It's our home, and we love being there. This has been hugely stressful to have this over our head for 15 or so years. We were involved in every part of those planning sessions, participating, saying that, you know, we want path of progress, we want safety and these things. And we saw 15 as being a very dramatic solution to that, so we're completely in agreeance with staff's suggestion that it was overkill. Hopefully, technology and those things makes car driving safer. We can do things to improve the corridor so people can walk and ride bikes in those areas, but taking our buildings is not a great solution. So I urge you to vote to agree with staff's suggestion, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving to our virtual environment, our next speaker will be Lynn. Lynn, please unmute your mic.
Hello again. I am Lynn from Alert Door Service. We've been serving the San Mateo and surrounding communities for the last 44 years. We've owned the building on Amphlet for 30, and the last, I think it's been about 15 years, have been pretty scary and upsetting for us and all of our neighbors. We're all small businesses. We've all worked hard to buy these buildings, and, you know, we all want safety, et cetera. But to take away so many buildings, especially in a time where there are so few buildings available, they're getting knocked down, and big, huge buildings are going up in their stead. Where would we move if we had to? We're at retirement age. We don't really want to start buying something super expensive and having to, you know, start financing our lives. We just hope that you will listen to the staff recommendation and table this for good and let us get on with serving the community. And I appreciate your service, and I'm sorry you had to listen to some nasty people. I can't believe they do that, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Judy. Judy, please unmute your mic.
The reason why I'm calling is that it seems like it costs so much to do these projects these days, and we should have a moment to reflect on how bad our spending has been to the point where we have to spend this $150 million to fix the road thing and buy everybody's properties. These properties used to be affordable, and the public could afford to do this kind of stuff. Now, these properties cost $150 million, or like $100 million, just to buy these people's properties out. We wonder why we can't do anything now. It's just because we've been treating our money like funny money, and part of the way your council spends its time is figuring all kinds of ways to spend money. Because of that, we can't afford to do anything anymore. So it's lucky for us, the Boomers had one last generation to basically sell our country down the river, and now we're worried about how to fix your little road while everybody else can't afford to buy a house or have a vacation. Everybody's working two jobs, and we're letting all kinds of people in from other countries with criminal...
Please, excuse me. Please address subject matter jurisdiction.
I think you should think about how this affects our future to use this money this way. I think you should save it. You should stop giving money to all these other causes, and you should be ready for hard times and not spending like this drunken sailors on your roads. Just because you guys want to play government and spend all this money doesn't mean it's a good idea. There's people that need this money better than you.
Thank you. Your permission to speak will be removed. And our final speaker will be M. Bobbin. Please unmute your mic.
Hi. My name is Maggie Bobbin. I live on Poplar. I guess one thing I am wondering about is that there is a lot of traffic that's fairly, that's like not speed. I mean, there's speed is an issue, and pedestrian traffic and bikes along that corridor are really important, I think. And I guess with not continuing the project, are we considering other options? Like not necessarily the funding options, but like what does that look like? Because I think that that's one thing that should be considered with this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, and I think perhaps we can respond to that quickly.
Yeah. So safety is one of the purpose originally that was developed, and congestion and circulation is another. The reality is, right now, we are kind of pinch point in the Poplar on and off-ramp by a lot of vehicle congestion and peak hours on U.S. 101 Southbound. I think installing the intersection or the traffic signal at Poplar and Humboldt would help that, for sure, because we can go ahead and be flexible with how we do traffic signal timing, how we can go ahead and do time-of-day plans in terms of phasing. But in reality, I think we're going to need to study the whole neighborhood as a whole a little bit more to figure out how we can alleviate some of the congestion concerns.
Great. Thank you for providing information to the public. So any other, I guess, no more public comments? So I will close public comment, bring it back to council, and Councilmember Hedges.
I'd like to speak. Could you, by the way, this is a great report. You guys did a very good job. I've been involved in this, and I think it started before 2015, because I've been in many meetings early on. The whole Burlingame held meetings on it. That whole city council's turned over since this started. So if you could go to, I think it's Slide 3 where you show the white diamond pattern?
Give me a second here.
That's okay. To the rest of the presentation.
Slide 3, you mentioned?
I'm guessing. That's where you showed the white diamond.
You want the white?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see.
That's good. So this project was needed. I attended meetings. I've never seen, people that I know are very reserved, were almost irrational over this. I know people that I care and work with that I couldn't talk to about it. And it wasn't just San Mateo, it was Burlingame people, too. I don't know how long you've been around, whether you attended any of these meetings. It was, the temperature was pretty high. And quite frankly, I told people, I was on the TACAC when this came up from the very beginning, there's no funding for this. The likelihood is low. Now, two people spoke tonight, Kasha Plumbing and Alert Door. I use them. They're a real resource to this community. Rico Medina, who's the mayor of San Bruno, works for Kasha, and he's talked to me about this long before I got on the City Council. And what they were asking is, just tell us what's going to happen, because we'll make plans to move. So I think this is telling them what's going to happen, my feeling. But I want you to look at this map. Right over, just a little bit above the left side of it, is where Metta's campus is. There's a lot of other businesses that are seeking a southern route. Guess where they have to go? They either have to go to... They either have to go to Broadway, Burlingame, or they go through North Shoreview along the Bay Shore, clog up Third Street, go over and make the roundabout there, and go south. So this was very needed. It's just not going to happen. And it's not going to happen for a lot of reasons, not just money. I could have seen, as upset as people were, I could have seen something on the ballot over this. And so I want to, after making that comment, I want to fast forward to Poplar. And we did work on that a number of years ago, maybe 10, and changed the configuration, and I believe it's safer. But it has, we've got to be careful, because if you're coming down Amplett going south, and you run into that, your option is to going through the neighborhood, pulling up on Grant, I think it is, and then pulling up to Poplar, which oftentimes during rush hour, even sometimes, not during rush hour, has gridlock. People don't go through the intersection set in the middle of it. So we have to find a solution, and bless you, I have no idea what the solution is, but it's important for North Central, and it's important for North Shoreview, too. And so I appreciate it being safer, but it has created a few additional problems, the way we're doing it now, and I don't know what the answer is. But having said that, is that I would be a favor of shutting this down. I don't think it's going anywhere, and we need to relieve those people who have been worried about it for well over a decade now. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Councilmember Hedges, for framing this. And I would agree that while I think the intention was to, was to make our streets safer, to improve circulation, to improve pedestrian, and safer out to schools for our North Central students, and this, this project has come to the end of the road. And, and it's hard to, it's hard to change course after so many years and millions of dollars of investment and time. And I, I want to applaud staff for, I mean, we gave it our best shot. This is, there's no, we, there was no stone unturned, clearly, and, and for the, you know, the business owners who've been in, you know, suspension in a form of like literal purgatory, not knowing what the future of their, their property and their livelihood would be for years and years and years, and just begging for an answer. While we went through this process, it's, I'm sure, a relief, but probably, you know, not going to repair the, you know, the damage that's been done in terms of all of those years of stress. And so I, I want to apologize for the stress that this project has caused, and I hope that we can, you know, I hope that those business owners who've been so directly affected by this process know that we all had the best of intentions, right? I want to turn, you know, the conversation to solutions, because I think, as Councilmember Hedges pointed out, really, there are unresolved challenges in North Central in terms of the whole neighborhood and needing to continue on the course of the complete streets analysis, and particularly looking at those two intersections. If we could go to the map, the hot map of collision data, I, I think it's important to point out, now, I've lived here, and I've been a part of these interchange conversations from way back as well. I also have two students who went to school in North Central, plenty of friends who, who live at Wood Lake. And, and these intersections on, on Poplar and Humboldt have been so bad that friends of mine with young children who live at Wood Lake would literally not allow their children to go to school unattended to cross that one intersection. That's how bad it is. And these are our kids. These are our students. And I think also, and I don't, I don't know how, you know, I don't know if we can disaggregate the data, but I, you know, in terms of the collision data for, for the Poplar interchange section, but I would say, based on my lived experience and the, and the collisions that I've seen in that corridor, they are very dangerous. I'm not talking about, you know, a couple scrapes and bruises. I'm talking about cars literally ramming into fences and, and lawns, front yards. I'm talking about cars that are running full speed into walls. Right now, the, the median and the, the iron fence on top of the median, it's been bent for years, because people just keep running into it. So I think that this project was largely supported by North Central, because we are desperate to improve these two intersections. And I wholeheartedly support all three of these recommendations, if we could go to the slide about the, you know, the staff recommendations. My only request to council is that for item B, why would we limit ourselves to small alternative projects? Why? I think that we, we owe it to ourselves and we owe it to our students to look at real solutions, all of the solutions, that, and I don't know how we would even quantify or define small. And so I, I really hesitate as a policymaker to sign off on some qualification without really knowing what that means and how that will narrow solution conversations and exploration, because our students and our neighborhood, my neighborhood, deserve so much better than what's there right now. This is, you know, I wouldn't, this is really a central issue of safety, public safety on our roadways. And, and I, I'm so grateful for staff for framing this holistically and thinking about the needs of the neighborhood and coming up with these recommendations, and I hope that council will agree that, you know, we don't need that word, "small." We can just eliminate it and look at all the solutions. And, and of course, you know, with the eye towards pragmatism and feasibility, right? But, but when we're talking about complete streets analysis, we're talking about bringing forward solutions that have never been considered, have never had the opportunity to even have the day of light, right? Like one-way streets. These are all the things that have never been considered, because there's never been dedicated analysis to this equity community priority area until now. And so, so I am in full agreement, yes, across the board, I, you know, my heart goes out to the business owners, and just that small tweak, let's just delete the word "small."
All right. Do Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, through the mayor. I'll be brief. I basically agree with Councilwoman Lee and Hedges. I, I do agree with A, B, and C. I appreciate the presentation. I do think that this is somewhat of an unfortunate end for this project and the aims of it, but I also think it's fortunate that we also have the North Central Complete Streets Program already underway. And I look forward to leveraging that and taking the opportunity to build on that so that we might be able to find some, some ways to continue to increase safety in this area. And I, I would agree that, I, I think the idea behind the word "small," of course, is that what, we were just looking at the large projects, and those do not appear feasible anymore. But I'm wholeheartedly for medium projects-
[laughter]
-that might, that might fit in the middle. Thank you.
You are such a bring-us-all-together kind of guy. That's great. Deputy Mayor Newsom.
So I also support A, canceling the project. I did want to ask Jay, and you might not know this, but you mentioned that the intersection or the actual off-ramp, since the median went up, went from one, 2.5 incidents per year to 1.5. How does that compare to other off-ramps in the city of San Mateo? Do you know?
I don't have that data available, but that's something I could follow up on.
Yeah, it would be great when we, because we're going to be talking about medium projects. Already jumping ahead. And when we start talking about, like, small to medium projects, it would be great to have some statistics. And likewise, I'd be curious to know with the intersection that's further to the west, where you had 11 incidents last year, how that compares? I mean, is that our worst intersection for incidents in the city of San Mateo? I imagine it's got to be way up there, but it would be great to have some data to be able to know just how much we should prioritize. That said, I'm in agreement with everyone that we should be prioritizing finding small to medium alternative projects and, and seeking grants for funding. So that's my take. Thank you so much.
Great, and I agree with everyone. So with that, I think you have your direction.
We'd like to vote.
No, it's not on the agenda.
We approve of the staff recommendation.
Second.
And just to be clear, it is on the agenda for the council to take action, to determine whether essentially you agree with the staff recommendation. So you can, you can make a motion to approve A, B, and C on the screen, understanding that it's, instead of just small, it'd be small to medium, it sounds like, is the consensus.
That works. That's what I said.
I second that.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
And Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Gino, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank, please thank everyone else. Okay.
I'll be calling in the future.
Okay, now we have Senior Citizens Commission update, and Joanne McGreeny, our Director of Parks and Recre, Park and Recreation, is going to give it to us.
Good evening, everyone. Joanne McGreeny, Director of Parks and Recreation, here to present on the Senior Citizens Commission. And at the March 4th city council meeting, staff were directed to expand the mission and duties of the senior commission. And so to meet this goal, staff reviewed the existing ordinance related to the commission and determined that the current scope is adequate to meet council direction to expand its mission. And here it is, I'll read it. "It shall be the objective of the Senior Citizens Commission as an advisory body to the council to encourage, foster, and facilitate programs for the enhancement of all matters relating to the social, economic, and personal well-being of the senior population." Staff have developed a detailed plan to ensure the commission's activities fully execute, fully reflect the existing ordinance. And that includes regular check-ins with staff liaisons to other commissions to review topics that can be brought to the Senior Citizens Commission. And a couple of examples we have here are housing element outreach, transportation accessibility, and general plan policies and actions related to seniors. A couple of other items, as you have already directed, we will be expanding the commission to have a youth commissioner position added. Additionally, the Age Friendly Coalition will be invited to present updates on their program and activities to the commission every six months and potential, and discuss potential collaborations with the city to be explored. And then the Clerk's office will also conduct a review of boards and commissions, which will provide a framework for evaluating the effectiveness for the expanded role of the commission and addressing any concerns that may arise. So another topic for consideration is, at the January, January 23rd, 2023 meeting, the commission proposed a name change to remove the word "citizens" from the title. In a subsequent meeting, the commissioners reviewed the names of commissions and neighboring agencies, and staff conducted a survey based on their feedback. You can see here four options were included in the survey. We received 160 responses, with the majority recommending either keeping the existing name or changing it to the Senior Advisory Commission. And the commission ultimately unanimously voted to recommend the name change to the Senior Advisory Commission. So for you here, does the council wish to change the name of the commission? And depending on the feedback, feedback received, staff will work towards preparing any necessary revisions to the applicable ordinance to carry out the direction provided. That's it.
Thank you very much for being concise and very comprehensive. I know, I was going to get it this time. So do we have any public comment?
Madam Mayor, thus far, I have not received any requests to speak on this item in person or virtually. That concludes public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I will close public comment and bring it back to council, who has a comment? Councilmember Hedges, why don't you start us off?
I love the name change. I think since we have a youth commissioner now, that it'll be on there, that it's, I think, since it's not all seniors, it should be called the Senior Advisory Commission. I think it's perfect.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you, through the mayor. I just have one question, Joanne. As I've spoken with at least one constituent who is interested in ensuring we're getting representative outreach and input from the disabled or differently-able community, I just thought this might be an opportunity, as it might fit within the now increasing scope of this commission. Get your thoughts on, could related issues or topics possibly come to this commission? Or would it be a better fit, maybe with the Community Relations Commission or elsewhere?
So I'll go ahead and take that question, Councilmember Lorraine. I think that it could be a hybrid of both, but probably the CRC is kind of where we're really envisioning overall in talking with staff of accessibility issues to take it on. But it doesn't mean that there could be ad hoc of commissioners from one commission, you know, joined with another commission to talk about accessibility issues. Typically, when the city does take on accessibility issues, or when we discuss ADA transition plan, which is required by federal law, and usually you'll have community meetings and discussions, but, you know, there's opportunities, I think, all around to be able to talk about how we can create a more accessible San Mateo.
Okay, thank you. I hope that we just keep it in mind, of course, as we look at our boards and commissions, how they're performing, and, and topics that may allow for input from that community. And I approve of the name change. No further questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Comments? Councilmember Lee?
Hi, I also support the name change. I, I think it's more inclusive and, and appreciate the, the community input on that. I did have a question about the appointment of one youth commissioner, and I'm curious, why, why are we only considering one instead of two?
Just to clarify that point through the mayor, so that may have been a misstatement. We have two youth commissioner seats for the senior commission.
Awesome. Okay. Then I withdraw my question. Thank you, happy to vote yes.
Deputy Mayor?
I support the name change. Yes.
Okay. And my only question is, as, as you work through the new comm, commission, really focusing how does the commission work with the age-friendly group? Because there has been a lot of question about that, I guess, and I would love to take full advantage of both groups of people. But I also very much support the name change and the direction. Okay, so, do we need a motion?
No, you don't need a motion for this item for- For this item, unlike the previous item, staff was just asking for direction from the council, and as noted in the staff report, staff will come back to the council at a future meeting with an ordinance that would change the name of the commission and also deal with various cleanup items.
Great, thank you. All right, then we will move on. A quick note to clarify the agenda, our next business item will be a closed session. However, before we move to closed session, we will take reports and announcements. Following reports and announcements, we will move to closed session. Who has a report or an announcement to make? Councilmember Lee, please start us off.
I beat you, Councilmember Hedges.
That's all right. You have seniority.
So I, I wanted to ask if there would be any room, or if there's already in the pipeline and a, as, a timeline for us to review our ADU ordinance and implementation. I, I've been hearing from, from folks that there's some sticking points in terms of how our discretionary ADU ordinance is being implemented. And, and, you know, since I helped write the policy, and I know that when we set it, there was, you know, there were some gray areas that we, I think, wanted to test out. And now that it's been in place for some time, I think it could be timely to look at, look at if there's necessary cleanup or streamlining clarification for policymakers. Because, you know, my understanding is that we want to support the building of ADUs, and the intention behind the ADU discretionary review process and its crafting was to try to help incentivize off-street parking. And particularly, I know in, in deputy mayor and my districts, there's a great need for parking, and ADUs could be part of that solution. And so I, you know, I wonder if there's, if there's council interest to agendize a review, then, or if that's already being planned, I'd like to, I'd like to hear.
Well, perhaps the city manager or assistant city manager may have more to say on this, but, you know, the state law governing ADUs changes frequently. So that's typically when staff will examine the change in state law and then make corresponding changes to our local ordinance. Of course, you know, the city would do that in connection with any related implementation actions and general plan and the land use element and the housing element, but normally it's, it's tied to a change in state law.
And, and I, I appreciate that, but I do think that this is a pretty discreet area of the law, which is specifically about discretionary review. And my understanding that there's been like over 20 applications through the discretionary process, that I don't know if they've actually been permitted. And so, you know, this is something that is germane to, you know, developing housing. There's clearly an interest in going through discretionary processes in the city with that number of applications. And I think that there may be, there may be a need to improve our process and our policy.
So I think to weigh in, I just want to first and foremost, if the council wanted to look into this issue and have a discussion, we already have a really aggressive schedule of items we're going to be working on in order to implement our housing element and our general plan here in the near future. It's all really prescribed, and it's kind of what the council gave us direction back in June of last year. Now, I'll want to look into those 20 discretionary items first, so what I'll do is I'll ask staff to look into that, and then we can provide a council weekly update and just see what's going on, if that's, if that's a big issue to look at, and happy to facilitate that. But if we were to take this on, then we have to look at what is going to be deprioritized in order to take this on, because we're limited in our whole staffing resources at the same time.
Okay, well, I guess I'll just say that, you know, I have a neighbor, he's, you know, a low, low-wage Latino man and his wife who've taken out a loan and incurred significant costs trying to go through discretionary review process, and it's really financial, it's a serious financial constraint on him. And, and then on the other hand, there's another friend who works in tech and, you know, and has a great deal of knowledge in land use and agency, and is also running into challenges. Those, just those two examples demonstrate to me that, that our policy might be falling down somewhere when two, two very different demographics are, are running into challenges with, with one discretionary review process for ADU development. And so, you know, and I think that this is pertinent to, specifically to the, the concerns around, you know, the policy being created with the hope of, with not just creating housing, but also off-street parking, which is, which is, you know, a great, you know, priority as well. So, yeah, so I think if we can, you know, if we can do, you know, more than a cursory look, I think it would be a great service to us and the community, and also maybe remove some of those roadblocks that we might be creating.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, I would just mention, I appreciate the city manager offering to take a look at some discretionary reviews that might have issues, and, and think that perhaps the, the weekly update to council may be a good start, and I, I trust that that update should issues be found that seem to warrant bringing back to council, we'll, we'll learn it at that time.
Excellent. Anything else? Councilmember Lee, you're fine. Just asking her if she has anything more. Okay, thank you. All right.
I have three things. First, thank you for bringing that up. I get all the negative declarations, I've done it for years. They're very enlightening on what's going on in the city, and not just the stuff we're emailing, but these actually come in a postcard that I think are easy to read. And so I've gotten two SP9 lot splits, all in North Central, two, that's all, over the years. I just received one from Shoreview for a lot split for four units, first one in the city. It's, I'm trying to remember, but it's a house with an ADU and then a duplex on the other lot split. I looked at the lot, I did a Google drive-by. It doesn't look that big, but obviously it has to be big enough to, to take care of it. So that's the first one I've seen in all of San Mateo, and I watch it pretty closely. The other issue I want to report that I wish you guys could have been there, at, at Amazon, I attended this week, a seminar on artificial intelligence. I thought it was very educational. I thought there were a couple of flaws with the, with the presentation. One, you weren't allowed to ask questions or make comments, so there was not a sharing from the community. But, and I, but I thought all of the, the people who presented did very well and were very educational, except for the last two people, it was just sort of a chat. And one of the people chatting said, well, this isn't gonna really take jobs away, it'll create so many jobs in working on the, on the machinery that the over-the-road truck drivers, this is almost laughable, it's too, will be able to live at home and not have to travel over the road. And there was no, but I, but they took comment in the hallway later, so I was able to talk to the young person that made that comment, and explain to her that Metta said there's gonna be wholesale job displacement, that everybody knows there is, there's 5,000 over, or 5 million over-the-road truck drivers. And I made the comment that our, well, I'll just say the names, Lyft and Uber really don't want to have independent contractors, they're looking forward to driverless cars. And on the way back to my house, it was announced on radio that they've cut a deal with Waymo, Uber and Lyft, and they're gonna be putting driverless taxis in Phoenix to other cities. So the future I was talking about is here. And so you have people in these organizations that have purchased vehicles and maybe mortgaged themselves. And so this is just an example of the social dislocation we're gonna have, and we have to figure out how to do it, because we didn't do very well with NAFTA, and some of the other issues has come around here taking jobs. So we gotta figure this out, and it's gonna be well beyond my life standard to figure it out, but there's young people here that need to work on it. The other issues, I hopefully was gonna send an email to you in persona, said I couldn't, with a list of, yeah, he, he stops a lot of good conversations. And so, yeah, I see you shaking your head, but this was the wrong one. So I meet about every two years with the head planner of Kansas City, because they're doing some amazing things. And they're trying to reinvent their old streetcar system right now, but they have actually entitled 55 office buildings, some of them 30 stories, that's created almost 6,000 residential developments. I've walked those, I've gone by them, I've talked to the people that live there, they love them. In the inner city, there's a lot of, lot of 20 and 30-somethings walking around with their dogs, didn't see many kids. And it's revitalized the old downtown, which was the steepest downtown when I was a kid. And so it is doable. And the only thing we lack here is the courage to start doing it and finding the locations. And I'm seeing, now I take the San Francisco Business Times, I'm somewhat of a progressive that actually believe that businesses often lead our way to making some solutions. And they're buying some of these office buildings from the banks for 25 cents on the dollar. That tells me there's a corridor, at least in the city, for doing some of this stuff. And I, I saw a missive from, in one of the emails from Josh Becker, he brought this up, that maybe we can do something like that. So I sent him the list, and I sent it to Assemblymember Pap. So I hope, you know, I kind of elongate this, but I think this is a solution, looking for somebody to figure out how to do it, and we need to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, through the mayor. I'll just, I just wanted to thank staff for work on a lot of notable consent calendar items. I didn't want to necessarily hold up passage with comments, but I did feel like it was worth mentioning. From standard maintenance, a lot of important work for Public Works, for our wastewater treatment plant, for our stormwater resilience. Councilmember Hedges brought up a very important Class IV bike improvement. If that, you know, that might be the second protected bike lane in our city, which will be huge and in a very important corridor. But also, city responses to resident requests and concerns, particularly in District 5 this time, I just wanted to note the, the Hillsdale High 31st grant application, and BHNA President Reagan was here earlier, you know, he and Hillsdale High School and others have, have played a big role in furthering traffic calming in the area. 42nd and King Ridge, the, the storm drain replacement I noticed came about partly due to residents calling into Public Works and mentioning leaks. And a climate adaptation plan grant that appears to have been at least contingently approved from Caltrans, very important part of our general plan, and, and the solar carport at Beresford, I know we did get some complaints, but for Beresford rec center to be powered by solar on its own property, and for the city to get this opportunity at a much lower cost thanks to Peninsula Clean Energy is, is notable and, and to be celebrated. And I just would be remiss if I didn't mention that the Bayfront Cleanup this year, this year's Bayfront Cleanup is Saturday, September 21st, over at Seal Point Park. And I, I also heard that there may be a bicycling event with some, some of our seniors in the general area, so I'm gonna bring my bike and try to double my pleasure, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
And that's at eight, at 10:30?
Yes, right. So the Bayfront Cleanup will begin earlier, and so, and, and the bicycling event will begin a bit later. Thank you, Mayor.
If I may just add one thing?
Quickly?
Yeah, we're along the lagoon between Rick Skud and I, we're bringing kayaks, have people kayaking, we're gonna do a wholesale cleanup on the lagoon, too.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I don't want to steal, you're probably gonna cut, well, I'll just say what hasn't been covered yet. Thursday nights on B starts at six, six to eight, this Thursday night, it's Mercy and the Heartbeats. Friday, 9:20 at Los Prados Park, we have movie night in the park, it's The Parent Trap. Saturday, we, we are booked all weekend. Saturday, we have the waterfront cleanup starting at nine. My daughter Maeve and I have been going every year, she loves it, and I encourage everybody to come out, it's a lot of fun, but don't forget to bring gloves. They also do have, San Mateo, Move San Mateo does have that bike ride that Councilmember Lorraine mentioned. And Sunday, San Mateo has the Electric Train Launch Party, which you covered last meeting, but just to reiterate, that's two to six, Sunday, at Central, Central Station. There's 49 days till the election, so remember to register to vote if you haven't already, and ask your family and friends to make sure they voted. I made a comment, or sent a comment to, to City Clerk earlier, because I wasn't sure we were gonna be observing National Suicide Prevention Month, but I did want to just make a couple of comments about that. Last year, over 50,000 people lost their lives to suicide, and with figures like that, chances are we've all had our lives touched at one point or another by suicide. If you don't think you have, chances are that the people around you think it's too taboo to speak about, and it just points to the fact that we need to open up and not have a fear about talking about mental health. I myself have lost both a high school classmate and a family member to suicide, so I always feel, sorry, I always feel it's important to shine light on the subject. It's, we're very fortunate to have a great organization, thank you, a great organization in San Mateo County called Star Vista, they have 24-hour, 24/7 support at 650-579-0350. You can also go to samateocrisis.org. Another great thing happening in San Mateo County is that the county has declared loneliness, a public health emergency. Supervisor Canepa has been having these, leading this series, they have a Loneliness Delight Event, October 1st, from 10 to noon. And in closing, if you or a loved one are experiencing an immediate crisis, you can always call 911 or the alternative, which is 988 for Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Just three digits away, dial 988. And remember, you're never alone, just make sure to ask for help, because people care about you and you are loved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was, boy, so important. All right, so I have just two things to add on, from an event perspective. On the 26th of September, at the library in the Oak Room, from 5:30 to 7:30, the Library Foundation is happening, having a Harvest Happy Hour. It's a fundraiser for the library, but lots of fun, so please stop by. And then on the following Saturday, the 28th, pretty much all day, I think from about 10 to 6, will be the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce's September Arts and Culture Fest, which will be on B Street, and it's a joint production with the San Mateo County Civic Arts Commission. And what's great about this, it's going to be a day of artists who are local, singers, writers, performers, all sorts of artists. So please come out and support our local artists, and thank you all very much. So with that, is there anything else?
Just for the last item on the agenda, we may want to check for public comment.
Okay. Is there any public comment for our closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have not received any requests to speak on this item.
Thank you very much, then I will close public comment. We will adjourn here and then go to closed session. We will adjourn here and then go to closed session.